Well, good morning. Ooh, good morning. Stereo. I don't know what I'm, yours isn't even on. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Coachella. Today is October 22nd, 2024. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Leitens?
The Pledge of Leitens to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson will be absent for today's meeting.
Okay, good, good to see everyone, almost everyone here. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments?
Quick check around the room, nothing at the last minute?
Today's agenda?
No, sir.
I didn't have any. Good. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time? I don't think we have anyone.
Sir, nobody's coming forward.
They are us. So, on the consent calendar, I know there's been a request to pull item, which one is that, L?
It's item L.
Five L, so we'll pull item five L. And I think Council Foray wanted to make comments on one of the other items before we take action.
On item H, you'll note that it has to do with the Oasis project. And as you know, in the past, we've gone through a conflict of interest exercise and recused directors and then requalified President Powell to decide things regarding Oasis. That had to do with construction assessments, how to pay for financing, things of that nature. And as I think almost a year ago, we had a very, a different issue, but our analysis is that now that the district is beyond dealing with those issues of construction, property acquisition, et cetera, that whether there's a conflict will be on a case-by-case basis, namely because Director Nelson, for example, is an employee of a company and may or may not directly have an interest in whatever it is that we're doing here. And so, there will not be a need to have an automatic recusal of the board members for future Oasis projects. On this particular one today, it has to do with a budget transfer issue, so it doesn't, that won't have a material financial impact on the directors who otherwise have an interest in or around the Oasis project. So, from a legal point of view, there would not be a need to recuse on this item in the future. If there are any other larger Oasis projects dealing with rates and charges and things of that nature, we'll go through that analysis, but it is likely we're not going to have three disqualified board members going forward. And for today, our legal advisors, there's no disqualification required for item H.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'd also like to pull on that item, H.
Oh. Make it even more interesting. All right, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, items pulled, first is five H, which is the budget amendment for the Oasis project.
Good morning.
Hi, David.
Morning. Would you like a presentation, or did you just?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear just summary what the budget is about. I missed it on the agenda, so.
The request is, excuse me, the request is more or less administrative. The project was anticipated to be completed last fiscal year. It was not completed. We did not budget for it this fiscal year because we thought it would be completed last year. So, this is just an acknowledgement of that, allowing us to finish the project calendar.
Okay, so you had expenditures during this?
That did not occur last fiscal year that are coming in this now.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I ask sort of a tangential question? So, I know there were issues and delays and some additional efforts to get the project right. When is CBWD going to be assessing standby charges on those projects receiving that water?
The expectation was to begin that next fiscal year.
So, July 1 of 2025?
Or for customers able to receive water.
Would start July 1, 2025. I get you, okay. I know that's tangential, but I've been wondering.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Director Aguilar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass four oh. Thanks, David. And then Finance, we have this edit on the investment policy.
John, thanks. I, I, in the old days, when we, when we had the Finance Committee Subcommittee, we would meet and have a presentation on the changes. And I'm not even sure we have a Finance Committee anymore, but anyway, regardless, we haven't met for a while, and so I wanted just to hear some, some of the highlighted changes, particularly related to the addition of some instruments in the new policy, please.
Sorry, Eileen is on the Zoom as well. She's from Chandler Asset Management, and Chandler helped us review the investment policy. Our main objective with the edits is to apply for certification by the California Municipal Treasurers Association. Them in conjunction with CDAC, which is a California Dead and Investment Advisory Commission, sorry for all the acronyms, they've developed the certification for investment policies for best practices, and it really highlights our transparency and our adherence to the guidelines, whether it's the Government Code section, Senate bills, or investment protocols in general for public sector. There are 14 items that are recommended for amendments within the policy, and we listed them in order of the policy, so if you would like, I could highlight each one of them.
Yeah, that's really not necessary unless the other board members request it. And you sent me a more thorough explanation, which I really appreciate yesterday, so if you'd like to summarize, that would be sufficient.
Yeah, so out of the 14, seven of them are really to get us enough points in order to get the certification for the policy. Others were just grammatical errors, punctuation, things like that that were amended. We also added some clarification regarding a Senate Bill 8A2. Just, again, minors changing an A to a 1 and a B to a 2 within the policy for clarification. As far as new investment transactions, that's on, I think you're noting on page six. I actually spoke with Chandler yesterday about that. It's not necessarily that they are new, but it further clarifies the fact that we are able to transact with, directly with institutions, just like we did with BMO. If you remember, we approved the CDs. That is an approved investment type, but the actual institution wasn't noted within the policy. So, again, it's just to add additional clarity and that both pieces are tied together within the policy.
Great, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
One of the limits was changed from 30% to 20%, right?
Right.
Is that something that this?
The CDAC, right. It's a best practice.
So, it's not really a law, it's a recommendation?
Yes, yes.
But we want to be in, we want to get a good rating from, or a good score from them, or something like that?
Right, so, so one of my objectives as I go through these policies or any work that we do within finances, to try to adhere to the best practices that are provided to us within the government sector. And just like our financial statements and our budget, we get awards for those. There are awards for other policies. Our reserve policy would be another example where the Government Finance Officers Association provides a certification and a, and a award, I guess, for best practice in having a reserve policy. So, same with this, there is an award for the investment policy guidelines.
Okay, so you're gonna bring home the hardware? The trophy?
I'll try, yes. And, and they do have about 90 days to review the policy and provide us additional recommendations, just like they do every year for our budget and our financial statements, and then we would bring back those potential edits at the beginning of 2025.
Thank you.
Without explanation, Mr. President, I would move approval of item L.
Second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor say aye.
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 And if I can, just Director Aguilar, the Finance Committee does technically still exist, it just has not met in some time.
Thank you.
But it does exist, and it is still active.
And you're on it.
I'm on it too. I don't think we've met for like two years.
It's an obligation.
About 16 months, maybe.
Maybe it's time.
If it's any comfort, I did read the whole red line, and it seemed.
John, you always do.
Well, I probably might not have if you hadn't raised the question, but that was, it was useful to go through it. Let's see, onto the action calendar, 7A is the PSA with WSP USA.
David.
This is the strangest thing, I swear, who's forcing us to do this? Don't we have a machine that eats trees in the channel, and now we're, now we're planting them? Okay, go ahead.
Yes. I'll start with, there's two items on here. The first item is requesting the board to authorize a general manager to execute a professional services agreement with WSP USA Incorporated to facilitate the development of a letter of map revision for submitted to FEMA to remove the approximately 4,600 acres of land that are currently within a special, a FEMA identified special flood hazard area. WSP was the original engineer of record for the project. We're just, we're asking a sole source with WSP, given their familiarity with the project, and to allow us to ideally get the LOMAR through sooner than later. And the LOMAR will facilitate, once these folks are removed from the flood plain, the statutory requirement for flood insurance will be removed. So, that's the one item. That cost there is $72,288. The other item, to your point, is an item that comes from our requirement to obtain or to get a permit through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They have jurisdiction from bank to bank within the, within the storm channel. And they identified as part of our permit 40, 22.8 acres of permanent disturbance and 85 acres of temporary disturbance. They gave us two options for compensatory mitigation. Option number one was to acquire land offsite at a two-to-one mitigation ratio for the permanent disturbance and a one-to-one mitigation ratio for the temporary disturbance. The other option, number two, was we would not have to mitigate for the temporary, we would only mitigate for the permanent, but we do it onsite, and that's 45 acres of land that we encourage native plant species, we actually plant some natives' plants, we remove all the non-native material, and we do this and establish this and then maintain it in perpetuity. So, obviously, that, that was a little less expensive than Brian, 130-some acres of land. And maintaining that offsite, we're already there in the channel, working in the channel. We did an analysis from a hydraulic perspective to look at the roughness factor associated with introducing this vegetation, and we have determined that the addition of these few items does not impact the capacity of the channel in this location. The cost is $598,236, the total cost of this request, which also includes engineering or staff time and a 10% contingency, is $765,524, and I'll take any questions.
Are we making efforts to make sure we don't have habitat in the channel as much as we can? And it just seems like we should maintain the channel so that the flows can be unrestricted, and I think we do that. But apparently, this part of the channel had, had habitat in it before we did this project?
Well, there's, we have the.
I guess as well.
We have the existing low-flow channel where there is some habitat. There are restrictions with CDFW and what you can do within the channel because they do claim jurisdiction. So, there are some, some aspects of the vegetation that we're not allowed to touch. There's methods for how we're able to take vegetation out that we're required to do. If we're gonna take out a tree, we have to hand carry it out, those sorts of things. But we do maintain the channel to the extent possible within, within the rules that we apply.
So, there's a lot of habitat in the channel, is what you're saying? Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm assuming there's already a source of water here because you have some flows from the sanitation plants and this and that.
That's correct.
So, we're not required to provide water to this?
There, there may be some irrigation required, not by way of pipelines or anything, but there may be some spraying from the top slope to provide, or to help establish some of the vegetation that they're asking us. We're doing a hydro seeding.
Like with water trucks?
Yeah.
What do, what do, so the low-flow, the low-flow portion of the channel is just a small section, right, compared to the entire channel? What do we do to prevent that from getting any wider?
Well, through the reach that we have here, we've actually put in a structural section. It's concrete through, through most of that. When we have storm flows, occasionally it meanders, but we do, we do work consistently to keep everything centered in the channel.
David, I have a question. What is, I'm not familiar with the term channel invert lining, is that also concrete?
Yes.
Under the bridges?
Yes.
What does that mean?
So, you, so you may recall, if you're looking at the exhibit here, we had a constriction here associated with four bridges, Avenue 56, River Boulevard, two railroad bridges, and Highway 111 Bridge, and then we also have that reverse curve. That's where we had the constriction where we did not have the capacity to convey the 100-year flows. And so, what we did was we lined underneath the bridges, we lowered the channel to drop the, the water surface elevation to allow it to get under. And so, the lining of the channel, you know, in LA, they're taking concrete out. They just, lining of a storm channel, any channel at all is something that's frowned upon. So, that was the, that, that made the discussions a little more involved with CDFW.
Yeah, I think I was just, I didn't understand what inverted meant.
It's, it's not really inverted, it's the invert, the invert of the channel. We just called the invert. I'm not sure of the origin of that word for the bottom of the channel, but.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Where exactly are we planting these, these trees?
They're spaced about 275 feet apart on alternate side of the channel. The mitigation area starts about 550 feet north of Avenue 56, and it goes roughly nine tenths of a mile, about 4,600 feet.
So, just on that first red portion, or?
North of the red portion.
North of the first one?
Yes.
And then does it go down, does it cross the other side, or?
It does not, no, it's all north of Avenue 56.
Okay, and then on the south portion, there's nothing there?
No, there's nothing related to mitigation there.
Okay.
Man, this is, this is absolutely a waste of money. This is just, might as well burn it, it's just a joke. If you were a bird, you wouldn't say that. This is a joke, it's a joke. But, I mean, there's no other way around it. There's no other way around it. I mean, it's gonna cost us more money to go do something else, just, this is, this is the epitome of what people are mad about in government. This is just a joke.
Well, I will say, if it makes a difference, we do not just take whatever the regulatory agencies tell us and go and do it. We, we engage heavily, we talk to them about how they arrived at these, you know, where the impacts are and how it is that they're seeing us. We do try to hold them, hold their feet to the fire, if you will, as it relates to how they come up with these items, with this type of mitigation.
You'd think this would be covered, I mean, we're buying so much land all over the Coachella Valley. I mean, you'd think this would be one of those projects that would be covered, that.
That is an argument that we have presented to them multiple times. The Coachella Valley Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan was put together, and part reason we joined it was to mitigate for the impacts related to our public purpose here in the valley, and CDFW unfortunately doesn't, doesn't necessarily see it how we do.
Are those appointed people that are on this board?
Well, this is staff, CDFW's staff.
California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Imagine they report, they report to the Secretary of.
Yes.
Who's right.
One of those departments. He's appointed. So, it ends up going back to the governor. It's just, it's just not right. It's absurd. Taxpayer money for, for just nothing. To landscape the channel. Yeah. So, this bid that Mariposa put in, I guess they were the only ones that put in a bid. Was it in the ballpark of what we thought that it would be?
It was, we did, we, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting onsite. We walked, we had about, I believe it was three other bidders, or three bidders total that showed up, and explained, explained the site and all that. The, we asked the contractor who was doing the work to give us a proposal, thinking that we might get some kind of economy scale with him. The cost that we, proposal we received from them was about 750. So, this is about three-quarters of that. So, it does seem close to the cost. We will be monitoring the cost as we progress. Part of the, part of this cost is associated with the idea that we're not really sure how well it's gonna be established. We have this habitat monitor mitigation plan that we, that we're required to report regularly, regularly to CDFW over the span of five years. And so, part of that is to make sure that stuff is established. So, there is a chance that if things establish sooner, that some of this cost will not, we will not be, you know, have to pay for some of this, but we'll monitor it heavily over the 18 months this contract is in place.
Yeah.
You know that, there's a treatment plant right next to that, and it's already, I was walking there on Saturday, and I noticed there was a bunch of birds in the treatment plant, all over the equipment. I'm just wondering how this is gonna impact that treatment plant. It's right next to it.
The birds will be happy. They'll have a lot of birds.
The staff won't be happy.
Yeah. And you're just, you're, you're creating harborage for the birds, right? Which is the whole point of this.
I'm just wondering if, I mean, I know you mentioned that you did an analysis for flow restriction, and that's what it sounded like was your logic for picking this spot, but I'm just wondering if there was any consideration for, you know, what's around the area, like a treatment plant?
No, I don't think we considered.
Yeah. Might be an issue.
There's no way to fight this anymore? Writing a letter to the Secretary of Fish and Wildlife, or having a, having a congressman write a, write a letter, you know, anything that?
There's any number of ways the elected officials can engage on this kind of matter. I would say for this particular project, you know, we're already permitted, it's, it's probably too late not to discourage any kind of engagement.
Did the, was this area defined, was there a defined area of where you had to do the mitigation, or was it left to us to kind of come up with it?
We worked it out, it had to be, they wanted it onsite, obviously, where we were doing the work, we didn't want it there. We had problems with restriction, or we didn't want to introduce additional constriction, which is why we looked at the hydraulics of what we were doing. So, this area up north is a slightly wider channel.
Isn't the problem, though, is that they're trying to designate this as a body of water? And, and that this is not a body of water, this is just a storm channel? I mean, that is the whole, whole thing, I mean, right? Haven't we had this problem before?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, that is the issue. I mean, once they, they realize this is just a storm channel and not a body of water, I mean, we've lived here our whole lives, it's not a body of water. I mean, that just takes water from, you know, upper stream to lower stream, and it protects us from flooding. It's all it was made for. It's not a natural body of water. I know you guys have gone round and round on this.
There's also a wonderful discussion about waters of the US and the changing EPA policies on what's considered waters of the US.
Yeah, that was relaxed, right? That was a Supreme Court decision that relaxed that somewhat.
Somewhat.
So, that a puddle that shows up for, for a day.
Ephemeral streams are.
Isn't.
Here today, gone tomorrow, still waters of the US.
Do we have a motion to approve 7A, as much as we don't like it?
We do need to move forward.
I have concerns with the area, so I'm probably gonna vote no. Is there a, a chance that you could move it in between those two red areas? Is that just too much of a restriction?
Hydraulically, that's not gonna work.
That's not gonna work. If, if you could voice your concerns about that area, there may be a way we could further mitigate it, but we've already got a contract in place.
There's another issue too, that I think the, the city is under the gun for some type of monitoring plan with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I think it's the only city in the valley that, that has to have that type of monitoring plan because of the.
MS4 permit?
Yeah, because of the bacteria loading in, in the channel that traverses the city. And, and it seems that a lot of what's triggering that is that, is that ecosystem, is the birds. And so, I haven't fully got my, my head around it, but, but it seems that CBWD doesn't have to do that with its drains, so, so it's all being put on the MS4 drains. And, and those birds are causing issues. So, now we're gonna get more birds. So, that's kind of at the surface of my concern.
Well, to be clear, the MS4 is for surface flow, and the agricultural drains that the Coachella Valley Water District operates and maintains is for groundwater flow.
Sure.
Agricultural drainage.
The birds are an issue, though, and now we're just inviting a bunch of birds again. So, it just, we're solving one problem, but I think we're creating another one.
David, if you don't approve this, what is, what's the impact?
Well, I guess I would defer to our environmental folks, but there's probably an argument that we were permitted to move on this project, which we have completed, with an understanding that we were gonna follow the, the rules of the permit.
Good morning. So, like David said, that we'll be out of compliance, and this permit has been executed for a while now. So, we are required to mitigate for this project. And as he mentioned earlier, the alternative would be to go ahead and acquire 120-some acres of land, which you know would cost more, and we are required to maintain those, that amount of land in perpetuity. So, that would be more costly, and the work that we're presenting to you this morning, yes, I understand your concern and of the project that's, or the mitigation actions here, but over time, long-term cause would be more to, to acquire land.
I think we also have to be careful about our reputation with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We've made a commitment to get a permit to do a construction project. We've done the construction project. This is not the last construction project we're gonna have to get a permit for. So, if we basically reneg on this or enter into prolonged negotiations, the cost will go up, our reputation will be somewhat sullied. And so, there are some intangible issues here that have been considered by staff to get us to this point. I appreciate the fact that it's not a perfect solution, but I think we've all heard the enemy of the good is the perfect, so.
Well, I mean, I, I agree that it's distasteful in many ways, but I think after hearing the staff explanation, I would move approval of this item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
You know, there might be a way for the city to have bird scaring devices. They work, they work, they work, usually.
Anti-poop devices?
No, I mean, they're, they're, well, lights and noises.
You know what would be better? I think what would be better is, and maybe this comes at a future time, is if, I don't believe that, that the city has had a chance to really evaluate the impact to, to its responsibilities and maybe fiscal impacts, and so, I don't know if it would trigger any sort of monitoring on the city's behalf. But to the extent that, that the city is able to identify additional impacts related to this type of project, you know, I, I would, I would hope that as a board, we would, we would consider those thoughts and, and discussions if, at whatever point that were identified. I just, I just don't wanna come at this as a, you know, we're resolving our issue and not really. Come at this as a, you know, we're resolving our issue and, and not really. Thinking too much about what other issues we might be causing our neighbors, so. So that's, that's my concern and I, you know, that's what I would want. In the future, I, I don't have all the details right now, but.
So one option would be to come back with that further information that you request, but to approve this in order to stay in compliance with our agreement.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to stay in compliance and I agree with Jim that. You know, these are big projects, we wanna be in good standing with our other partnering agencies, but I think that includes all our partnering agencies, including the city, so. I think there's gonna be more to this and so I'm just, um. Hoping that we're open to that.
Um, I'll second the, the motion. Noisemakers work really well. We have bird problems all over the place.
My, yeah.
They do, they do work.
They've come a long way.
My, my father, uh, worked in irrigation with, uh, ranches for a long time and he had those guns that he'd throw.
They're outlawing this. Yeah, that's what we use.
They're, they're not, not.
They're outlawing this.
Well, you, you can't use the ones that, that are considered firearms, you can use the ones.
They shoot like a little shot, shotgun shell.
Yeah, that's, we're not doing that anymore. We used to. We used to, alright, so there's a, there's a, but there are things you can use. Uh, we have a motion and a second, um, why don't we go to the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that passed four oh.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Thanks, Joanne.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't allow the fish and wildlife, the game industry, wh- whatever that war is, to be bullies. I mean, we, we have to, there has to be some common sense.
Yeah, this wasn't common sense.
This is not common sense.
Not common sense. Alright, on, on to B, I mean, this is why people are leaving California. B, go ahead.
Sabrina, good morning.
Sabrina, go ahead, go ahead with B, seven B.
Uh, for the record, my name is Sabrina Neese, Engineering Manager for Domestic Water. The item before you today is a request to execute, uh, task order number five with Krieger and Stewart Incorporated. For well number forty-five twenty-nine dash one, forty-five sixty-nine dash one, forty-six thirty-two dash one. For the, the structural design and surge analysis. Um, one item, I'd like to just, uh, clarify a bit, um, well forty-five sixty-nine is for the Verano development. Within a Rio Vista pressure zone. Well forty-five thirty-two dash one is for the Cotino development within the Mission Hills pressure zone. Um, these three projects will be funded differently, so forty-five twenty-nine will be funded using Pago funds. Forty-five sixty-nine will be funded using deposits from the Verano development. And then forty-five thirty-two will be funded using deposits for the Cotino development. Um, our total request today is for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that cost would be split evenly among the three projects. And I'd be happy to answer any more questions or go into additional detail about what our quest is related to today.
Are there any wildlife here?
Uh, no, no, we're, we, we don't have to talk about any trees, yeah.
I don't know why I couldn't get a map on my, I see there's a map here.
Yeah, I can't, I'm looking for the map too.
It's on the screen.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, I, I looked for a map in the packet and I didn't find one.
So the design's gonna cost three hundred and fifty thousand. But all three wells together are gonna cost four point five million, correct?
No, so each well, so forty-five twenty-nine was previously started in construction, so we'll have to rebid that project. Once we complete the structural design, that project cost is estimated at four million dollars. The other two wells, Verano and Cotino, have not been drilled yet, so the total cost of those wells, once drilled and fully equipped, will be four point five million each. And the reason for the cost difference is just things are going up and. Things are getting more expensive as time goes on.
That's what a domestic well is, four point five million.
That's what we're projecting at this point.
That's like stainless steel and how deep is it, like a thousand feet or?
Approximately a thousand feet, um, so would the next well that we'll be drilling will be Cotino. Um, so that's actually gonna be coming up pretty quickly here. That's gonna help us really assess where the costs are today, because it has been some time since we've drilled the well.
Yeah.
Um, that one will have a stainless casing and we're gonna try not to go as deep on that one. Um, so we'll have a better idea on, on project cost as, as we complete that one.
That's a lot of money. For a well. Thought they used to be a million, now it's four and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so seven B. Is there a motion to approve?
So we've, prior board action, we've already. We've already looked at all these wells? Was that what this is?
So, no, prior board action is related to quite a few different things, so forty-five twenty-nine, that one was previously in construction. So we had requests, solicitation bids, went out to bid, started construction, weren't able to complete it for a variety of reasons. That project will be repackaged and rebid once the structural design is completed and, um, the surge analysis is completed. The other board action items, um, are related to solicitation of bids, um, as well as the purchase agreement with Tesco for the MCCs. So for two of the projects, um, we do currently have those on order, are expecting those within the next couple of months. Um, so those have already been in process. Um, and then the last one is just the solicitation of bids related to Cotino.
Okay, and those MCCs were the, sounds like that's what was giving us issues, right?
Very, very long lead times, yeah.
So we purchased them in, in advance?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Anybody wanna go for it? I'll move approval on seven B, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, good, um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, pass four oh?
Thanks, Sabrina.
Thank you. C, Scott Burrit, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Scott Burrit with the Department of Public Affairs and Customer Experience. And I'm here today to, uh, request that the board, uh, consider adopting resolution number twenty twenty-four. Dash forty-one in support of a legislative proposal. Titled the Hexavalent Chromium Legal Liability Protection Act. Uh, this legislative proposal, um, the, the draft language was drafted, uh, with Cyrus Devers, who's on the line. And Sean Haggerty at BB and K. Um, and it's, the reason we're seeking a board resolution is because we're submitting this proposal. To the Association of California Water Agencies, Aqua. And we're requesting their sponsorship or support of this legislation. So we needed to do it through a board resolution. Um, and if you like, I can answer questions, uh, the, the language, would you like me to run through the language?
Not particularly, no. I mean, the idea is that if, if, if we can't construct the projects before the two-year. Time limit, uh, we would be shielded from legal liability.
Correct.
Cause we have to send out notices. Is, is there anything in the proposed legislation saying we don't have to send out the notices in the first place?
No, and Cyrus, do you wanna jump in on, in here?
I'm happy to, and yes, that is exactly what we got stopped on with, um, the previous PDA bill. Uh, trying to change anything related to the notice or the compliance deadlines was a non-starter. You know, with the members and the policy committee staff. So the purpose, the idea behind this is we're not stepping on any of those landmines, yet accomplishing our goal.
Yet another example of California being completely irrational.
And I would just point out that this is, you know, one part of a multi-pronged approach. Um, seeking legislation this upcoming session, there's discussions with the Community Water Systems Alliance about. Uh, drafting some more comprehensive legislation on, um, the pursuit of MCLs. Um, and maybe coming up with a strategic plan at the state level. There's another initiative that's being discussed to pursue significant amount of funding. Um, and if Prop four passes in November, then there's, I believe, six hundred and five million dollars there. Um, so, but we didn't want this proposal tied to something that could easily get shot down.
Right, right, yeah, no, this is important, I hope. We're successful.
And we are working with the coalition of water agencies and we'll be building upon that this upcoming legislative session.
Yeah.
So, um, Scott, this, this does entite to the schedules, uh, we're not fighting the schedules anymore, this is just liability protection?
Yes, it's just liability protection, because when we did talk about, I'm sorry, did, did I cut you off?
No, I, I'm just wondering if we're not pursuing that anymore or, or we give up on that?
Well, I think by, by extending the compliance period, it also would put off the noticing requirement. And legislators and, you know, Cyrus said were, um, very. It, it was a line in the sand for them, they want the notice to go out. They want the public notices to go out. And so, um, and Carrie, I don't know if you have anything to add, or hopefully I'm representing engineering correctly, but. Um. You know, from, from the legislative perspective, it's gonna, it would be very difficult to extend the compliance period. If not impossible, like we've seen this past session.
So does that mean that by definition? Once you go out, once you put out the notices, it's cause you're in violation?
Of exceedance, yes.
We would be in violation. If we had to put out notice.
If we have to put out notice.
And we're saying there's, we can't fight that anymore through the legislative process? Is your take on it?
That's my take on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we would need to find somebody willing to carry that legislation and so far, we've not been able to find someone. So we're kinda weaving our way through.
Mike, could you jump in real quick?
Sure.
Um, the, all is not lost, it is true, we cannot fix the notice problem in legislation. However, the staff, the agency staff has said they're open to working with us. So it's possible, I can't, can't be assured, because we're not scripting this out in statute, in that way it would be certain. But if we can, uh, it's possible that the notice can avoid the trip wires, the specific words such as violation or, you know. We can wordsmith, we have an opportunity to wordsmith it, so all is not lost, cause that's what I wanted to add in.
Alright. Yeah, keep pushing.
Okay.
Uh, is there a motion approved? C.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Can we write the letter and say that we? That we are opposed to this and we think it's a waste of money? When we send it out?
Oh, when we sent out the notice?
Yes. Can we, can we completely?
Pretty sure they're gonna write the notice for us.
State our position?
We can do that verbally, we can do that through other means.
You know, it's, it's so hard to argue, because you don't wanna say that you're not interested in, in clean water. But that's not really what this is. Okay. It's, I know. Um. Didn't they show that movie in other states, how come they didn't pick up on it?
That the issue wasn't coming.
Frickin', alright. Informational items, uh. Written communications is. No, I think we already had this other letter from last time.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, eh, okay, uh, we have a presentation on the ERP. Good morning.
Good morning Samantha.
Samantha.
Good morning, President Powell, good morning, members of the board. My name is Samantha Lopez and I am here today to present the quarterly update of the ERP and utility billing implementation.
The reinforcements are coming down.
Good luck.
The new ERP system will help streamline processes by inter- integrating key functions. This will enhance collaboration and provide real-time data sharing across departments. Additionally. Advanced data analytics will offer improved reporting and forecasting capabilities.
Nice AI pictures you have there.
As with any major system implementation, we've identified risks with the new ERP and we're addressing them as we go. One area we flagged is change management. To mitigate this, we are focusing on communication and collaboration. Another risk is project continuity. And to address that, we've brought in a consultant, Barry Dunn. This ensures consistency even if any internal lead on the project leaves. We've also reviewed vendor stability by reviewing financial health and securing source code in an escrow account. Finally, we're maintaining strong oversight on budget and timeline. Closely monitoring data migration and being mindful of scope creep to keep the project on track. Throughout this project, we're gonna have four partners. Two of those partners are going to be an instrumental part in the implementation. And then the remaining two partners are going to be our life partners. So Barry Dunn is the project management consultant that we discussed, um, for consistency. So they're helping the agent or the district stay on track with the project. Strata is the implementation partner, so they're working with Workday and SpryPoint to ensure that. We configure the system per the scope and per our RFP requirements. Workday is the ERP system for the finance and HR. And SpryPoint is the utility billing system. This is one of the ways that we're gonna communicate to stakeholders about the project, so this is more of a high-level dashboard that will be rolled out. Um, in this dashboard, people will be able to see the program and project status. They will be able to track milestones, any change orders will be put here. Um, we are able to log lessons learned and then any resources changes, um, in staff. This next view is going to be the project hub, so we're going to be implementing this, um, these systems in three project phases. And so throughout each project phase, um, staff can go in and get status reports, project plans, review the budget. Log any decision and rate a risk. Project dashboard and activity trackers. This is the deployment methodology for both of the systems. Um, what we wanted to highlight here is even though there, some of the steps are called different things, like the analyze phase. In SpryPoint, it's very similar to the plan phase in Workday. So we're showing consistency throughout the project. This is our project timeline, so this is what we consider our three project phases. Um, phase one of the project is going to be the SpryPoint implementation. The kickoff started October seventh with a targeted end date of December third, twenty twenty-six. Following a sixteen-week stabilization period, and so throughout that stabilization period. Strata, the implementator, and Barry Dunn will still work with us to make sure that everything is going as smoothly as possible through deployment. The second project phase is the Workday HR Payroll and Financial System and we also kicked that off on December seventh. Um, a target end date is June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-six, following a twelve-week stabilization period. And then the final project phase is phase three, which is the Workday Financial Planning System. That is going to kick off June twenty-second of twenty twenty-six with a targeted end date of December fourth, twenty twenty-six. Following a four-week stabilization period. Although the timeline appears fast-tracked, we built an extra time for each phase to allow for thorough analysis and configuration of more complex tasks. We will not go live with an unready system, while the target date, completion dates are goals, we have flexibility to accommodate any unforeseen issues. The next slide, um, these, this is going to be representing our workstream leads, um, so I think there was a handout provided on the second page of that handout. You're gonna be able to see the names of these workstream leads. These people are going to serve as the primary point of contact for their departments, ensuring that all team members are informed and, um, are aware of important updates. They will coordinate training sessions, guide the implementation process, provide feedback, participate in system train, testing. And ensure smooth department-wide coordination throughout the project. So these people were assigned by different departments. We wanted to make sure every department and division is, um, represented by somebody and so these people were selected. These are other roles that, um, CVWD team members will carry, so we have the Executive Steering Committee. Um, on the handout, you'd be able to see it's going to be Carla Romero, um, Luis Maciel and Scott Burrit. Um, the Program Manager and Project Management Team, so we have our Program Manager, which is Barry Dunn. Um, the consultants, as well as I am the business side for the project manager for finance. Um, we have Matt Grigsby, who is going to be the Sprite Point Project Manager, and then we also have Doug. Who, Reden, who will be the technical project manager. We are assigning people technical team leads, functional team leads, testing leads, change management leads and training leads. Some of these people will be the same, some of them will be different. It just depends on what their role is during the implementation.
So I have a question about this. So under change management lead. Where you talk about facilitating organizational change, blah, blah, blah resulting, what does that mean?
So um, along with changing a system, you're gonna have a change management issues um come about. So a lot of people are resistant to change. Um, you're going from very manual processes, a very older system to a very modern system. So we wanna make sure that we're instrumental in how we do those changes. Um, one of the ways where we're making sure we collaborate and we're including many different people in um the discussions. Um, we're gonna start holding forums for employees to start asking questions. Um, but it's basically to manage the change that's gonna be happening throughout the district. And so we will have the Barry Dunn team, we have a lead for the um change management. HR and communication will be taking a large role in that.
Okay, thanks.
We wanna make it less threatening um to individuals and so that they feel more comfortable in how the transition occurs to the new processes.
Yeah, no, I get it. I think, you know, it's important that you do it simultaneously, that you don't wait until you complete. The implementation and then just toss it on people. That's not gonna work, so I think you understand.
Yes, so for that, we also did the the program hubs and then um we uh Luis. Uh, launched a SharePoint for employees to get um quarter or updates as we go throughout the project. This graphic is more to talk about the concept two in a box. Um, the vendors always like to show this, so if you look at the bottom section. CVWD represents light blue and with every um lead role, you're gonna have a consultant working with them. So CVWD staff will not be in the dark doing this. They're gonna be with somebody throughout this whole process. And this is what our vendors call two in a box. When looking at resources and needs for departments, staff will either take a lead role or a supporting role. Lead roles will equate to a quarter to a half full time employee on average. And supporting roles will equate to a quarter full time employee on average. The fiscal impact, um, as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the district has spent one point three million dollars. Two hundred of that was throughout the selection process for the ERP system. The remaining one point one million is for the subscription subscription costs that we just started paying for year one. And with that, I will ask if anybody has any questions.
Good morning, um, board members. I just wanna highlight the uh extensive work we have done here, staff. Um, and getting us to this point. Thank you to the board for approving the budget. This is obviously a huge effort. Um, the commitment is there by all staff. We we have a lot of support from staff. Um, because they dislike the current system so much that they're willing to go through this process. Uh, we have technologies that we have fully vetted, uh, that while it will be challenging, um, it's the best option for the district. Um, obviously, thank you to the general manager, the coworkers, uh colleagues, directors that have supported this process. Uh, we will have some challenges, but uh we're ready to tackle them. And again, I wanna thank you. Thanks staff, Sammy, uh, the project managers for help helping us to get to this point. We will bring another update in three months. Uh, but if you have any questions during this process, please feel free to reach out. Thank you again.
Thank you.
It's a good presentation.
Yeah. Next is the board general comments, Director Aguilar. I wasn't ready with comments either. We'll just pass on that. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Nope. Into the meeting, September twenty six. Let's see, that was Director Aguilar Aqua.
Oh, thanks John, that was a while ago, but um, so this was a webinar, it's a series of three. That talked about contaminants in water systems. It was it was given by an attorney out of San Francisco, an environmental attorney. And he talked about um settlements on these disputes primarily through litigation. And talked about some of the amounts of the settlements, which are pretty significant. And then he talked about some financial resources for disadvantaged water systems that have contaminants in it. And Jim and I have watched it too, but um, but most of it did not apply to us, but it was interesting background.
Yeah. Um, we had the CRB meeting in in our place in Palm Desert on October ninth. I was there in the audience, Vice President Estrada is on, is the alternate on there.
Yeah, that was uh, one of their general meetings, I think, one of the action, and I did email um. Director Nelson on on some of the pending things that needed to be resolved. One was. The scheduling of next year's meetings, um, sounded like folks want it. Want those to land somewhere in Redlands or Ontario. Um, and so that's something that he needs to weigh in on. And then. We're also in the recruitment process for the new um. What do we call him? Executive director, executive manager. Uh, so I believe there's um, the the deadline was extended, it might have passed already, but. At that time, we had about sixteen applications. The plan is that those will get reviewed by some of the managers. And some of the water agencies and then those will be provided to the board members with notes. Um, and then the the board will decide who will get interviewed, so. Um, other than that, we got a update on the different systems, uh Met and. The state water uh project and Colorado River, so very informative to me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. They always had the meetings near Ontario Airport. That made sense to me, although I don't know how many people fly, actually fly to the meeting. But if they are.
It was in that, it was in that hotel, right?
Yeah, I mean, that just seemed, that seemed pretty easy. I don't know why why they got away from that. October sixteenth, uh CBUSD and CBWD North Shore School Meeting.
Yeah, uh, we had a request from. The uh school superintendent, Coachella Valley Unified School District and some of their management team. They are in the works um in building a new school out of North Shore. And they wanted to get together with staff here at CVWD just to make sure that. Um, we were all on the same page as related to schedules and uh so that was, that meeting went very well. Um, I think that we are um doing what we can to try to accommodate their schedule. And uh, I appreciate the staff's work with uh coordinating with them. It went well.
Um, October twenty first, we had yesterday a Agro Caliantic Principals Meeting. At their um new museum. It's good. I think the next one's gonna be back in Rancho Mariz though. Went alright.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Did you wanna report on the burger meeting?
Sure.
Sixteenth.
Want to?
It was your meeting, yeah.
Alright, um, sixteenth?
It was on the sixteenth, yeah.
So we we did have a meeting on the sixteenth, um. I think staff, uh, Jim, you might be aware of this, but it's um been something that. I think has been in the works for a while and it's related to. It's somewhat related to our uh, our levees. I'm not sure what we're calling them, the the levees for thousand. Thousand Palms, those four sections that then connect to the India flood channels that go through the classic club and. The Burger Foundation area there, and so um. I know that they've been in conversation with the agency about some of their plans to reroute some of those flows. Um, around the classic club. And you you might already be looking at some of those submittals. And so. The conversation was elevated to. Try to figure out what the agencies could do to. Help in the development of additional flood infrastructure in that area to allow for some of that to happen. And I think they might have connected with the supervisor's office, um, they might have connected with some of uh other folks here. And in those conversations, which have been happening for probably about a year now. More than that, maybe a year and a half.
Directly with staff as well.
Directly with staff, so. One of the things that I had shared with with them, and I think, I think we we've all had this conversation on the dais is that. We have uh, I think, identified about a billion dollars worth of flood infrastructure on the books and. We we had this uh. Presentation the other day where. The amount of revenue that we're generating from the from the tax is so small that it'll take us sixty five years to do all those projects. And so we've talked about. How to augment that revenue, whether uh whether we would go after a special tax, which would require a vote, some type of campaign. Or whether we would explore other things like an EIFD, which would require maybe. Us doing our own or partnering up with the county. And so I think those types of conversations are starting to. Take more shape, and so this meeting, uh, President Powell and I met uh at the supervisor's office. To. To talk about. Ideas on how to perhaps augment revenue for purposes of building this infrastructure. And so what we got out of that meeting is that, well, first we wanna know what is the dollar value that. That we're trying to hit. Um, does it include uh more than just what's needed there in in Thousand Palms? And specifically in that area there, does it include the larger, the larger need, which is. You know, the East Valley, we've had those master plans, I think, put together. And are we really, you know, once we know the the numbers, are we gonna go after an EIFD? Are we gonna partner up with the county? Or are we gonna try to perhaps do this through through a special tax, which I think would require a lot of buy in from. The other agencies, the county, the cities, et cetera, et cetera, so. That's what the conversation was about. Um, I think that. The plan is that it sounds like there was already gonna be a a a meeting, there's already a meeting that's going to be scheduled maybe in the next month or so. Um, between staff and this is staff. Um, on kind of that project side, but also on the county side with the supervisor, including um. Their staff at the county, their executive staff. And so I think the 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 plan is that we would um, we would, we would probably, uh Jim. Um, be starting to join some of those meetings just to, just so we can all get on the same page on. Who's responsible for what, um, that was something that we indicated, we we need to be clear about. Our responsibilities versus other responsibilities and so I think part of those conversations is what. It's what we're trying to make sure that we all understand who's gonna do what, who's gonna be responsible for what portions, changes. I did mention that, at least my understanding was that. Cause I know that we've talked about this for, at some level for a year and a half, is that we have. Completed design plans, we might have done environmental on it, you know, the project's pretty much packaged. And so to the extent that that it needs to get unpackaged and then repackaged, you know, someone needs to be responsible for that. So those those were the types of things that we were talking about.
Well, we have had a couple of briefs um from staff to the board on the total program. Um, there are specific issues for each of the areas. Uh, I'm not quite sure um what it is we're trying to do here. Is this focused on trying to satisfy the Burger Foundation's concerns about routing stormwater through their golf course? Because we've had three or four meetings on that already. Um, and and we've been pretty firm in our position. Um, that flows will go through the golf course. That's what it was permitted for, that's what it was designed for. Uh, that's kind of the basis of how we're dealing with flows in that area. I I don't know whether you're asking us to spend more time talking with the county about other areas. Um, some of which we do have an interface with, like I think uh. You know, as we move our way further west, the county has a larger responsibility. They don't really have a responsibility in the east. Um, that I'm aware of, so I I I don't know, are are we focusing on a specific issue? Or are we trying to re-scope, you know, our entire program?
No, I think we're focusing, this particular ask meeting is to focus on the Burger Foundation project. And I think that uh, I think we have been firm that. That uh flows would go through the golf course, because that's what it was designed for and that's what it's been permitted for. And that's how we've designed our our flood infrastructure for. They uh don't, don't see that as a solution for them. So they would like to reroute those flows around the golf course and I think that what we've expressed, both I think staff and I think. We kind of expressed to John and I is that, is that, well, they need to, if they have to reroute those flows around the golf course, then. Then that's part of their project. And so I think they understand that. And so they would just, I think they just wanna get together to make sure that they, we're all on the same page about how they're gonna reroute that. Um, and what that's gonna look like, but but uh, that's where we're at.
I mean, we can certainly have a meeting. I don't know that we're going to agree um with the proposal. I think we've kind of had tentative meetings on that already.
I I would only caution against getting into details of negotiations on this particular one as opposed to a core of the meeting.
So I'll just, I'll close out and I'll just say that there's a meeting that's gonna get scheduled and then we can have those conversations there.
Yeah, and I just wanna um, let you know that at a staff level, we have been coordinating with. Um, the Burger representatives and their engineers. They have submitted H and H studies. And we are working with them on um. Potentially rerouting their flows. They had to get some permissions, um, because they're next to the preserve. They appear to be doing that. Um, and we are working on the land acquisition. For our Reach Four of the Thousand Palms project, which those flows would have to tie into. So we are currently at a staff level having those conversations.
Yeah, they mentioned that. They was very positive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they they've mentioned that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Are there any other meetings we need to report on? Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion.
Second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass four oh. General Manager.
I have nothing this morning, sir.
Counsel.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to mention a a couple of bills that were signed by the governor. They do not take effect until twenty twenty five. But in case you've been hearing about them or will hear about them, they do have some direct impact on. On special districts, including this district. One is the Levine Act, which has to do with campaign contributions, as we explained maybe two years ago now. If a participant or an applicant comes before the board for a contract or a permit. And a board member has received two hundred fifty dollars or more. More than two hundred fifty dollars in campaign contributions from that source, then you would have to recuse and disclose. Um, that was the first time the campaign contributions as opposed to financial interest uh were something that board members needed to to worry about. Uh, as of the first of the year, that two hundred fifty dollar threshold has been changed to five hundred dollars. Uh, so it's a little more flexible in terms of the amount that would disqualify somebody. Just as a quick refresher, this Levine Act says that during dependency of any particular contract, as well as a year. as well as a year before and a year after, you're not allowed to participate in something for which you've received this campaign contribution. They include some, in this bill, they included contracts of less than $50,000. There are already exemptions for employee MOUs, public works contracts competitively bid. The other item that I wanted to mention, I'm sure your Prop 218 counsel will, will talk to you about this, but three bills were passed that do lend some help on the Prop 218 front. The first one puts into statute the authority or the permission of the water district or any special district to include tiered rates that include the extra amount of water that it takes to acquire water for each tier that you go up in a tiered rate structure. As you know, there've been various cases that talk about, well, you can use a peaking, peaking factor, or you can, or exactly what amount needs to go in that threshold. So that bill does clarify that based on a recent court case. The second one includes is SB, I'm sorry, the second one is AB 2257, which includes an additional exhaustion of remedies procedure. As you know, if somebody wants to protest Prop 218 rate, they need to file a protest in writing and they can come and speak at the hearing. This procedure, if implemented, would require that if anybody wants to then sue under those 218, sue on those 218 charges, that they need to go through a, a process of filing that majority protest and making those claims upfront. What a lot of districts have experienced is that you don't hear from somebody at all. The fee goes through, there's not a protest, majority protest, and then later on, someone files suit and brings up new issues that the district could have or would have want, would have wanted to address if they had known about these before the rate was adopted. The last one is, deals with, I'll give you that number, SB 1072 that talks about remedies. As you know, there's no clear case law or court or statute on whether or not a refund to customers is a remedy that can be used. This statute says that a rent, that the remedy can be a credit on future bills as opposed to issuing refund amounts. And the theory there is not to get out of the responsibility if a fee is challenged, but that if a district who's already used those funds to spend on projects and things have to now come up with extra amounts for a refund, that itself could be over the cost of the service provided and could have 218 issues. So being able to use a credit structure as opposed to a refund structure makes a lot, makes sense to those who pass the bill. And then finally, under the Public Records Act, during COVID, COVID could not stop public records act requests from coming in. They, they still came in. The issue back then was there was an actual state of emergency and districts had less employees in the office, less resources to respond to public records requests. The Public Records Act says that an agency has 10 days to respond to say whether or not they have records that are going to address the request. And they can take another 14 days if the agency needs to check other field offices, needs to look through a large volume of record to determine if they have records to respond to. And those are unusual circumstances and they're listed in the law. Now, another unusual circumstance, but that would allow this 14-day extension, would be during a state of emergency on a state level. So this would address, if we're dealing with a state of emergency, that is an unusual circumstance that does allow for the more time to respond to public records requests. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any departmental reports today?
No, sir.
At this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. We will reconvene to report out following closed session. Regular meeting is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session. And we have no further business. So we're adjourned.